All right. It is six thirty-three. I'm calling this meeting to order of the Champaign County Board Committee of the Hall. Clerk, can you please call the rule?
Michaels, Pugh.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rogers.
Present.
Sexton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Store.
Present.
Straub.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorzlin.
Here.
Vanage Theronut.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Fortato.
Here.
Hanauer Friedman.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Lockshin.
Here.
Patterson.
Here. All right, could I have an approval of the agenda? Carter, Sexton. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have public, or I'm sorry, approval of the minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Could I have a motion? Locke. Vanage Theronut. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have public participation. I do not have any slips. If anybody from the public would like to participate, feel free to step up to the desk. All right, seeing none. We have communications. Is there anybody here with communications? Samantha?
Thank you, Chair. This is just an apology to my constituents in District Six. The things that have conspired across this county board, some of the decisions that were made were not solely on me, and I do apologize. Things was a little crazy, and so I do want to apologize to my constituents. I tried to reach out and talk to as many as I could with the recent events, everything that's in the media, but I had nothing to do with anything. We work supposedly as a collective body, but so many other county board members were not aware of the things that were being said. So I just want to, for the record, let my constituents know and apologize. I also would like to extend my hands out to the Republicans in this new year. There's a divisiveness in, across this board, and I don't want that. I think we are all here for our constituents in our district, and so many things have become personable. I don't wish to see that moving forward. So maybe sometimes, when you guys get a free moment, you want to go and have a cup of coffee, I'm here for you. I'm just a phone call, text, or email away. So, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else? Mr. Storey?
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder that January fourteenth is the Champaign County-wide Martin Luther King Celebration. It'll be, the doors will open at the Cranert Center for Performing Arts on that Sunday at four-thirty, and I hope that some of you can come if you're available and hear the really wonderful music and, and, and the, all the recognition of the community members who are going to get some awards. Susan Freiberg, Doris Hoskins, and, I'm sorry, I forgot the others, but thanks for, you know, for all those who can attend. Look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Leah?
Thank you, Kyle. Since Jen Straub isn't here, I thought I would just mention and remind people that with the extremely cold weather we're expecting next week, Cunningham Township could really use any extra winter gear that you have laying around. A lot of us just celebrated a holiday where children get new mittens and gloves and coats and things from Santa frequently, so anything that they've outgrown would be really appreciated at the township, and any adult sizes as well, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this may sound a little odd after that, but yeah, we'll have some temperature extremes. It just has been released to the, if you thought it was hot last year, it's because it was. It's the hottest year ever. We, as a county, have opportunities multiple times to make a difference in the overall heat of the world, and we should always take advantage of that when we can. This should be a county that, you know, we're the little blue square in downstate Illinois. We've worked before with the other caucus to get good, smart policy and projects moving forward, and I'd like to see that continue, or we're going to be looking for really, really thick coats and really, really changing what crops we grow and things, as we've already changed our zone for those who plant vegetables. So keep that in mind as we move forward, that whenever we have an opportunity at this board to do something to help it not be ridiculously hot and ridiculously cold, we should take advantage of it. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on, next is Finance.
First up, I got Budget, BUA twenty twenty-three, twelve, three-six-nine. Fund two-one-one-zero, Workforce Development Fund, Department one-one-zero, Workforce Development. Increased appropriations, a hundred K, increased revenue, a hundred K. Reason to allow the workforce development programs to adequately draw down funding from the existing grants through the end of twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Beth, second. Mr. Farney, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, Budget Amendment, BUA twenty twenty-three, twelve, six-seven-five. Fund two-zero-eight-nine, County Public Health Fund, Department zero-four-nine, Board of Health. Increased appropriations, a hundred fifty thousand. Increased revenue, three hundred fifty thousand. Reason to appropriate funds from IDPH, strengthening in Illinois Public Health Administration Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Smith, second. Jen, Locke, discussion. And this, just so you know, the balance of this will be going to, I was just told in caucus, I couldn't remember, twenty twenty-seven, so that we'll continue to have money for this going into the, from this grant. We're just paying, spending part of it now. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Budget Amendment, BUA twenty twenty-three, twelve, six-nine-five. Fund one-zero-eight-zero, General Corporate, Department zero-three-one, Circuit Court. Increased appropriations, forty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars. Increased revenue, zero dollars. Reason to cover outstanding expenditures for professional services and for a final payout to a retiring employee. Do I have a motion? Mr. Smith, second. Ms. Hanauer Freeman, discussion. Mr. Smith?
One quick clarification, is there, in the twenty twenty-four budget, an allocation for these services so they don't keep?
There is, and listen, we're going to get another one of these, because apparently there's still more unpaid bills. Ideally, in a normal world, we get one of these, like, we don't get it piecemeal, but we, to some degree, can control as a body how we get it. So, but yes, to answer your question, if you, in the last budget cycle, we put in two-hundred thousand additional services money into this. I'm not saying that means we're not going to get any of this, but hopefully, yes, because we shouldn't be seeing this month after month. It's not usually how we do this. Yes?
Yeah, I just want to second Mr. Smith's, I have a little dismay that this is what the second or third one that we see.
Second.
Second one, and we're going to have the third in February, and we know some department heads do a really good job of anticipating their budgets and coming to us during the budget cycle, which is really lengthy and has plenty of time for input, so, and other folks have been out there grabbing grants and things that have helped, and that will help in the budget in the future, and I commend them as in the next agenda item. Thank you.
That, thank you. That said, I mean, please vote for it. We need to pay these people. Some of them have been waiting for a while. Any, anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next up, Budget Amendment, BUA twenty twenty-four, zero-one-two-nine. Fund two-six-three-four, Public Defender Grant Fund, Department zero-three-six, Public Defender. Increased appropriations, one hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine. Increased revenue, one hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine. Reason to appropriate grant funds for the hiring of two mitigation specialists in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Farney, second. Samantha Carter, I want to mention, we have our Public Defender here in case she wants to come up and do a victory lap on the grant. Any discussion? Mr. Farney.
Way to go, Liz.
Yeah. Mr. Thorzlin.
Yeah, I'm going to second Mr. Farney and just say that I knew I liked your energy the first time you came to a county board meeting, and now I understand why. We all like your energy. Please keep it up. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Just what we needed.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Shortest, finest agendas in a while. Treasurer Report is on file. Auditor's Report is on file. County Clerk, increasing compensation for the election judges. On page fifty-seven and fifty-eight, the State Board has given us more money, and we want to pass that on through to the election judges. Do I have a motion? Eric Thorzlin, second. Jenny Lockshin, sorry, I saw two of you at the exact same time. Discussion, I had mentioned the clerk-
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have public participation. I do not have any slips. If anybody from the public who would like to participate, feel free to step up to the desk. All right, seeing none, we have communications. Is there anybody here with communications? Samantha?
Thank you, Chair. This is just an apology to my constituents in District Six. The things that have conspired across this county board, some of the decisions that were made were not solely on me. And I do apologize. Things was a little crazy. And so I do want to apologize to my constituents. I tried to reach out and talk to as many as I could with the recent events, everything that's in the media. But I had nothing to do with anything. We work supposedly as a collective body, but so many other county board members were not aware of the things that were being said. So I just want to, for the record, let my constituents know and apologize. I also would like to extend my hands out to the Republicans in this new year. There's a divisiveness in across this board, and I don't want that. I think we are all here for our constituents in our district, and so many things have become personable. I don't wish to see that moving forward. So maybe sometimes when you guys get a free moment, you want to go and have a cup of coffee, I'm here for you. I'm just a phone call, text, or email away. So, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else? Mr. Storey?
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder that January fourteenth is the Champaign Countywide Martin Luther King Celebration. It'll be, the doors will open at the Cranert Center for Performing Arts on that Sunday at 4:30. And I hope that some of you can come if you're available and hear the really wonderful music and the, all the recognition of the community members who are going to get some awards. Susan Freiberg, Doris Hoskins, and I'm sorry, I forgot the others. But thanks for, you know, for all those who can attend. Look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Leah?
Thank you, Kyle. Since Jen Straub isn't here, I thought I would just mention and remind people that with the extremely cold weather we're expecting next week, Cunningham Township could really use any extra winter gear that you have laying around. A lot of us just celebrated a holiday where children get new mittens and gloves and coats and things from Santa frequently. So anything that they've outgrown would be really appreciated at the township. And any adult sizes as well, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this may sound a little odd after that, but yeah, we'll have some temperature extremes. It just has been released to the, if you thought it was hot last year, it's because it was. It was the hottest year ever. We, as a county, have opportunities multiple times to make a difference in the overall heat of the world. And we should always take advantage of that when we can. This should be a county that, you know, we're the little blue square in downstate Illinois. We've worked before with the other caucus to get good, smart policy and projects moving forward. I'd like to see that continue. Or we're going to be looking for really, really thick coats and really, really changing what crops we grow and things as we've already changed our zone for those who plant vegetables. So keep that in mind as we move forward, that whenever we have an opportunity at this board to do something to help it not be ridiculously hot and ridiculously cold, we should take advantage of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on, next is finance.
First up, I got Budget, BUA 2023-12369. Fund 2110, Workforce Development Fund, Department 110, Workforce Development. Increased appropriations, 100K. Increased revenue, 100K. Reason to allow the workforce development programs to adequately draw down funding from the existing grants through the end of 2023. Do I have a motion? Beth, second. Mr. Farney, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, Budget Amendment, BUA 2023-12675. Fund 2089, County Public Health Fund. Department 049, Board of Health. Increased appropriations, 150,000. Increased revenue, 350,000. Reason to appropriate funds from IDPH, Strengthening in Illinois Public Health Administration Grant for Fiscal Year 2023. Do I have a motion? Mr. Smith, second. Jen Buck, discussion. And this, just so you know, the balance of this will be going to, I was just told in caucus, I couldn't remember, 2027. So that we'll continue to have money for this going into the, from this grant. We're just paying, spending part of it now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget Amendment, BUA 2023-12695. Fund 1080, General Corporate. Department 031, Circuit Court. Increased appropriations, $47,756. Increased revenue, $0. Reason to cover outstanding expenditures for professional services and for a final payout to a retiring employee. Do I have a motion? Mr. Smith, second. Ms. Hannah Hour Freeman, discussion. Mr. Smith?
One quick clarification. Is there, in the 2024 budget, an allocation for these services so they don't keep?
There is. And listen, we're going to get another one of these because apparently there's still more unpaid bills. Ideally, in a normal world, we get one of these, like, we don't get it piecemeal. But we, to some degree, can control as a body how we get it. So, but yes, to answer your question, if you, in the last budget cycle, we put in 200,000 additional services money into this. I'm not saying that means we're not going to get any of this, but hopefully, yes, because we shouldn't be seeing this month after month. It's not usually how we do this. Yes?
Yeah, I just want to second Mr. Smith's. A little dismayed that this is what the second or third one that we see. Second one, and we're going to have the third in February. And we know some department heads do a really good job of anticipating their budgets and coming to us during the budget cycle, which is really lengthy and has plenty of time for input. So, and other folks have been out there grabbing grants and things that have helped and that will help in the budget in the future. And I commend them as in the next agenda item. Thank you.
That, thank you. That's it. I mean, please vote for it. We need to pay these people. Some of them have been waiting for a while. Any, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, Budget Amendment, BUA 2024-0129. Fund 2634, Public Defender Grant Fund. Department 036, Public Defender. Increased appropriations, 144,979. Increased revenue, 144,979. Reason to appropriate grant funds for the hiring of two mitigation specialists in fiscal year 2024. Do I have a motion? Mr. Farney, second. Samantha Carter. I want to mention, we have our public defender here in case she wants to come up and do a victory lap on the grant. Any discussion? Mr. Farney?
Way to go, Liz.
Yeah. Mr. Thoreslin?
Yeah, I'm going to second Mr. Farney and just say that I knew I liked your energy the first time you came to a county board meeting, and now I understand why. We all like your energy. Please keep it up. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Just what we needed.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, shortest, finest agendas in a while. Treasurer Report is on file. Auditor's Report is on file. County Clerk, Increasing Compensation for the Election Judges. Page 57 and 58, the State Board has given us more money and we want to pass that on through to the election judges. Do I have a motion? Eric Thoreslin, second. Jenny Lockson, sorry, saw two of you at the exact same time. Discussion, I had mentioned the clerk is here if anybody has any discussion. Mr. Wilson?
About the request, I want to go back to the auditor.
So, point of order, let's vote on what we're going to vote on, and then if you want to go back to the auditor after that, we can. Right now, what we're, is on the table is Ms. Aaron's motion.
Thank you for passing that along. I'm hopeful that it increases election judge interest in what's sure to be a very busy year for you. So hopefully that will ease some of the strain on the folks who are working those elections.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so you want to go back to C?
Yes, please. So I see the auditors here, so I would just like to ask the auditor what his insights are based on this report or if he's got some summary discussion points he wants to cover.
Yeah, there we go. Not really, not in a comprehensive way. I would just say that when we have a Tuesday that falls before the 10th, we'll be one month in arrears in having the monthly reports. So you see November there rather than December. Also, December is a year where, December is a month where you get, you have to close the year. So we'll have that shortly in February. We may have two monthly reports that are reported. Yeah, any other question on that?
No, thanks for that. Appreciate it.
All right, anything else? Next up, so Chair's Report, I don't usually do a Chair's Report, but I'm going to today. There was some public comment about public safety sales tax and our bonds. That was just pretty inaccurate. And so I just want to make sure that we, as a body, understand our bonds. I think that that's a really important thing. I want you all to understand what our debt obligation is, what our public safety sales tax currently pays for, and the implications if we didn't have our existing public safety sales tax. I think that's pretty important. So I'm going to move over there and I'm going to just walk us through really quick. It's only going to take, but I know we get a lot of money, numbers thrown at us at the board. So I wanted just to walk through what it is and just take, especially, we have a lot of new board members. And I'll be honest, bonds, I think, are some of the most confusing thing we do. So I was going to take 10, 10, it's not going to take long, just minutes to kind of walk you through, like, what are the finances of public safety sales tax, fund balance, how it interacts with the general fund and what our bonds are. So I'm just going to move over there. All right. So I made a little PowerPoint so that I could kind of, and I'll put this, I'll have Megan put this up online so in case you want to look at it. I don't think there's much in here that's not in the budget, but just so you understand. So, listen, in public comment, there was a lot of comment about how we have a bond retiring in 2030. There's no bond that retires in 2030. These are the bonds that we have. We have bond payments. When we have a bond, how it works is we have to say how we're going to pay it. As part of how we vote, we say, listen, this is how we're going to pay off that bond, right? We have three bonds right now that exist that we're paying from public safety sales tax. The first is a 2007 bond that we refunded, basically restructured in 2016 for courthouse renovations, long before any of us besides Lorraine, I think, were on the board. And we're going to be paying that till 2026. 2020, 2005B rep bond that was refunded in 2014, restructured in 2014. Usually you do that to get a better interest rate or something like that. For the courthouse and the JDC facility that will be paid until 2028. And then we have a 2020, the bond that we just issued in 2022 for the jail consolidation, which we'll be paying through 2026. In addition, I, yes?
Quick question for clarification.
In 2036, I'm sorry.
When you have on here "refunded," I'm assuming you don't mean "refund"ed?
No, it's, I'm sorry, that's what I said. It just, that's the word they use for bonds. It means, basically, we took that bond. So this is really important to understand. Bonds aren't like you're paying off your car. You can't just, like, make some extra payments and then just pay it early. If you want to do something with the bond to change the date, sometimes you lengthen the date for payment in order to restructure the debt. Sometimes you get a different interest rate. You call it "refund"ed, and then you have to issue basically a new bond. You got to go back through bond council, the whole nine yards. We got to take the vote again. That's, some of us have actually been on the board in 2019, I think, we did that, right? So that's what it means by "refund"ed. It's like restructured. So like, you take that existing bond, you restructure it into a new bond.
So it's kind of like getting your mortgage refinanced?
Yeah, it's a good, yeah, it's a good analogy.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to mention, in addition, there are two bonds being paid from the general fund. The 2022 bond for the Bennett Administrative Center renovations, which, listen, man, that one goes to 2042, and I'm hoping all of us are off the board before that. So that's going to be somebody else's problem. And 2009, we do have one coming off the books this year for the 2002 Art Bartel construction, which I think is going to be the new animal control building, right? Is that what that is? Or what is 202? Oh, okay, that's what it is. Okay, sorry. I was like looking at a map trying to figure out what exactly that was for. Okay, so the corner and all that off it. So we have two bonds that exist that we pay. Here's what's really important. Forty-five percent of our entire existing public safety sales tax goes to pay these bonds. For this year, and it's always in between 40 and 50%. The bonds. So here's the bonds. All of these have footnotes because I'm an historian. So in case you want to go look at the actual document to see where I got these figures, you have the page numbers there. So 2026, we will, this bond will come off the books for the courthouse and then, or the clock tower. And then you're going to see that the courthouse and the JDC facility come off the books. Unless you're like, yeah, all right, 2028, we're going to have all this money, and that's fantastic. Yeah, that's not how this works, unfortunately, because going to the next page, what you'll see here is this is the jail consolidation bond. And so, just so you understand here, basically until 2028, the jail consolidation, we are paying interest because that's how we had to structure it in order for us to be able to operate the county. So we don't start paying down principal on that to 2023. So there is, if you look at, if you add it all up, it, we do get about, hmm, maybe half a million dollars in relief once the 2028 bonds come off our books, but it's not like we get the full bore of relief. So what do we do with the public safety sales tax? Because I think sometimes that's really important. Like I said, so we almost are going to, our projection is we're going to bring in almost 6.8 million, a little bit over 6.8 million dollars. Here's the budgeted expenses in 2024. And I recognize that this is somewhat abstract, right? So I wanted to give you some examples. And I really want to thank Travis for this. Literally, I walked into Finance Agenda and he was like handing me a bunch of papers. I didn't even ask him to. And he was like, just so you understand what we do with public safety sales tax. I was like, thanks, I really appreciate it. So thank, really, he helped me on that. Because of all of this, I could get just by looking at the budget, but these kind of figures, I needed help from staff. So in 2023, we paid directly from public safety sales tax, $600,000 of our utilities for all our public safety sales tax facilities. $200,000 in building and repair and maintenance. $320,000, the board voted when we set up public safety sales tax to take 5% of it and put it to juvenile delinquency prevention grants that we run through RPC. And we've done, and we've kept that commitment. And then, in case y'all don't know, that $100,000 we do for reentry is something that the board voted on, and that also comes from this. The thing that's not on here, that's actually a pretty big deal, although the number fluctuates a bit, is we typically take about a million dollars, although it goes up and down, from this fund, and we put it into CARF. And CARF is Capital Asset Replacement Fund, is how we fund our big projects. So our, the facilities plan and the IT plan, right? We try to put money as much as possible into CARF from this. But sometimes because of other expenses that we have in the general fund, we don't, we are not able to fund CARF as much as we would like to from public safety sales tax. One of the reasons I think we should go for an additional public safety sales tax is so we can more appropriately fund our CARF and with more stability, right? Because right now, we, as a county, we're better than we used to be. We used to be miserable at it. But we still aren't funding our Capital Asset Replacement Fund at the level that we should be for the long-term, big-ticket projects that we have. Budgeted expenses. So, so in public comment, there was a comment that the fund balance of this fund is 4 million. It's not, it's 6. And you're like, wow, that's a pretty big fund balance, right? Let me break it down for you. So, due to our bond covenants for public safety sales tax, we have to have the entirety of any year's public safety bond payments in reserve, right? So even though, like, we've got the money that we're paying that's budgeted, you have to have that in fund balance. When we voted for the bond covenants, that's what we voted on. So we have to have that 3 million at all times. In addition, it has been our policy as a county, as much as possible, to keep another million dollars in there because, listen, public safety sales tax, sales tax is a really volatile kind of tax. And so like in a year like we had with the pandemic and the bottom drops out of the first half of the year on sales tax, right? You want to be able to have that cushion, right? So we've always, that's always been our policy. So our goal, like, our minimum goal for 2024 is about a little bit over 4 million. So, you know, I'm a historian, I'm not great at math, but I could even see that's 2 million more dollars than, right? So you're like, why do you got that 2 extra million dollars? Because we've been trying to save up for a big project that is like a freight train coming at the county. And we've talked about this in here a lot. In 2019, the board voted on a technology plan. It called for the replacement of the Justice Case Management System in the courthouse. It's real old. In 2019, the estimate for this was 15 million dollars. And I remember Jim Goss sitting here, and he's like, so we're voting on this plan? And I was, and we were all like, mm-hmm. And he's like, we don't have 15 million dollars. And, and, and we were all like, nope. And he's like, I guess we're voting. And we all voted for it, but we knew we didn't have 15 million dollars. Right now, in 2024, we are in the middle of doing a study on, going into 2024, on what it's actually going to cost. I've been in a lot of conversations with Susan. She's been incredibly helpful, having conversations about what she thinks it's going to cost. I can't remember the county that just did this. McLean County, I want to, one of the 900M counties. And she's reaching out to them to find out what it costs. And she said, on the phone with me, she said, Stephanie, I doubt very much it's going to be less than 15 million. We thought it was going to be 15 million five years ago, right? But in addition to that, that we know is coming. In addition to that, we have a new judge that we are getting this March. And there has been interest in expressed about adding a courtroom. And in talking to our facilities director, the early preliminary cost estimate on that is 752,000 to a million dollars that we do not have budgeted. And at our last meeting, even if all of this went away, at our last meeting, the sheriff provided us a really good memo of between, I added it up, 3.6 million and 4.3 million, despite the fact in the press that there was like some kind of conversation that, that he had only provided like $180,000 worth of expenses. That there was, in proposed expenses, some of which are to pay for two new deputies that I know that members of this board have been asking for for years in the rural area, right? So if you add all that up, that's 20 million dollars, at least in expenses. That makes that 2 million dollars extra in fund balance that we have pretty sobering, right? And it, and so the next thing I wanted to say is this, is how public safety sales tax works. So every year, we have extra money in public safety sales tax, and we have to decide what we're going to do with it. And on the surface, that looks fantastic, right? On the surface, it looks like, wow, you could just plow that money into paying off a bond early. However, you got to, like, take the time to actually read this slide to understand what it's saying. So we have the annual things that we pay for year after year after year in public safety sales tax, including, I didn't mention this, 120K goes, we pay for one of our lieutenants directly from public safety sales tax. The $600,000 in utilities, the money to maintain our buildings, those kind of things. But then what you're going to see is not include, then we have extra money that we get to decide what to do with. Not including in there is the potential replacement of the case management system, reserved CARF funding, which I just said we have not kept up with since I've been on this board, and the transfer to the general fund to help support public safety operations. So let me give you an example. Few years back, I don't remember the exact year, our general fund was hurting. We couldn't pay for MetCAD. How we paid for MetCAD in its basically entirety was from public safety sales tax. You got to understand how the two funds work together, right? So let me give you just one real concrete example. In 2024, you're like, oh, man, we got 1.6 million dollars. That looks pretty good, right? Extra money. Well, let's look at the actual fund balance projection for 2024. You see, the fund balance goes down, right? And you're like, wait, if we have 1.6 million in extra money, how could the fund balance go down about $120,000? The reason for that is we have to pay for the out-of-county folks that were housing while we're constructing the consolidated jail. And we, that amount of money that needs to come from public safety sales tax because we don't have enough money in the general fund is going to actually dip into our savings. So that 1.6 is, is, is going to go away. In 2025, that 1.4 million, my guess is, we're going to need to put it towards the Jana replacement. And probably in 2026. But here's the other thing. You've got to understand how these funds work together. And in the budget, this page was on page 46. If you flip it four more pages forward, on page 50, when you look at our long-range projections, if you look at the general fund, we're okay in 2025, right? In 2025, we're predicting that we're going to have a little bit of, if everything goes the way we think it is, a little bit of extra money in the general fund and extra money in public safety sales. And that's great because if we want to, we could then plow that money into paying off the, paying, help paying for that case management system. The next year, though, and going forward, the predictions on the general fund are dire. And they have been dire since I've been on this board. Since, you know, other people were in these seats. I remember JJ with these like charts, and there was like a clip, like, a, like, this isn't like new information. And so you have to understand how the two funds work together, right? And the thing is, is this, is right now, for 2025, maybe we're good. For 2026, it's not. But eventually, right, some of these recurring costs that we have, our revenue isn't keeping up with them. And there's going to be a reckoning day. And so you have to understand the public safety sales tax in conversation with the general fund because as the general fund goes down, we have to take money, right, for things from the general fund that we pay for core public safety needs. And we're going to have to shift that to public safety sales tax. And eventually, that's not going to keep up. And listen, I'm going to be perfectly blunt. I don't plan to run after 2026. So that cliff, I don't know that I'm going to be here for it. But I think we, as a board, need to start talking about what we're going to do about that cliff because, other words, whoever's on that board is going to have some real hard, hard conversations when we get to that point. And I just wanted to lay all that out there because I wanted us to be, I think, when we hear about the budget, we get a lot of numbers thrown at us, but understanding our debt obligation and how this tax work, I think, are really important. Because if we don't understand this, we better not be talking about maybe adding to it, right?
I just want to clarify that the long-range plan projections were established before we made the additions in the most recent budget. So the cliff is not in '26, it's in '25. So this summer, we will be talking about these issues. So this summer, we will be talking about these issues.
Yeah, Samantha.
And so what about the, um, the funds generated from the tax that we're not allowed to talk about with the cannabis tax?
So yeah, we don't know how much money we get from the secret cannabis thing that we're, none of us are allowed to talk about legally. However, all of that money is spent in our budget. That's just spent under our, our regular, like, in our existing 2024 budget, we don't know what percentage of our sales tax came from cannabis, but we do know we spent it all, if that makes sense. Like, we spent all of our, we, we have budgeted all of our sales tax. We just don't know what percentage of it is from cannabis. I would really, really, really like to, because I would like to take that money and put it towards community justice issues, but we need the state legislature to act because until they act, we are, I am not allowed legally to know how much money that is.
That makes absolutely no sense to me. I can see, not seeing where the, the, uh, source is coming from, but we should have some kind of price amount, some kind of.
Either that or we need three more cannabis facilities to open up in this county and then we're allowed to, you have to have more than five.
I think, we have four.
Oh, we have, I thought we only had three. Okay, so two more. We need two more cannabis facilities and then we could actually talk about the revenue we receive from them. Uh, Leah, and then Chris.
I'm just going to be super quick and I just want to make a point of clarification because I know I was like really confused about the cannabis thing when I first heard about it. It's not a cannabis thing, it's a new industry thing. Yeah, so it doesn't have anything to actually do with cannabis itself. It's just because it's a new industry and like a new revenue source and there has to be a certain number of companies that are operating in that industry before we can know publicly how much revenue we're getting from that stream, okay?
I will, yes.
Thank you for that.
I will, that is accurate. I will say however, given the incredible impact of the war on drugs on the black community in the state of Illinois, that it would be completely possible for the state legislature to revisit the tax code and carve out cannabis as an exception to that. Uh, but that has not happened. And so there's not, we can't actually discuss that money in terms of any productive way because we just don't know how much there is. And it's really hard to know how much more of our sales tax came from cannabis because at the same time that that happened, that thing that Tammy talked about all the time, the level, the playing field happened. And so we got a bunch of new sales tax money. What came from which of those is really, I can't know. Like, it's impossible to figure out. I mean, I'm guessing from the lines I see at the cannabis places that some of it came from them.
This is Todd. I was, I was looking at your expenses and I didn't see, or maybe I overlooked, is there a, a, a line item for the demolition of the jail and sheriff's office?
So that would be funded out of CARF and so like the transfers we do to CARF. And remember how I was saying, we don't keep up with the level of transfers we should do to CARF? And forgive me if I'm wrong, but Jenny, I believe that we have the demo scheduled for 2026. It is part of the facilities plan?
Yeah, it's part of the facilities annual plan.
Right.
Um, I don't remember which year specifically.
Six or seven.
Dana is planning for that for.
I, I, I believe Steve might know.
I'm ninety percent sure it's 2026.
Yeah, I know we want to demo it as soon as possible because we don't want an attractive nuisance building sitting out there. I believe in the plan, it's a million bucks. So one year, I don't even know if demoing, I don't even know if that is being eligible expense, to be honest with you. Because I don't know if demoing an old public safety.
Oh, you mean to pay for it out of public safety? No, it's being paid for out of the regular CARF schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one that's funded by the general fund, not by public safety.
I think we can only build, I don't think we could tear down public safety sales. I mean, like, we could pay for like a new roof for the court, but we couldn't tear down the courthouse. All right, I'm sorry, that took twenty minutes, although there was questions, so I feel that's not totally my fault. I, I timed it, I think I was twelve and I think that's pretty good.
I just had a, a short thing. Some of us were made confused by the cannabis issue because the first half-year or year that we got it, we actually mentioned it in our budget before we realized we were violating the state statute that said we couldn't, so. And now we can't, so don't.
Just one comment, having been on the board for all of this, since I got on in 2011, other than Lorraine, I'm next in seniority. It was nice when we had former treasurer Dan Welch and then JJ Farney come and give updates, probably at least every other month or so, but they give regular monthly updates on topics such as the budget and incomes and taxes and what, what they would, granted, no one, nobody has a true crystal ball and obviously none of the projections up here are going to necessarily absolutely come true. But just based on the trends and what they saw and what had happened previous years, they could give us, uh, what they saw, the projections is what they saw was happening with our budget. And it would be more in everybody's mind throughout the year and it would just, seeing it more often, it would just help everybody know what was going on because you saw it more often. Yes, it would add some time to some meetings, but to me, it was, that was greatly helpful because yeah, again, you just see it more often, it'd be in the back of your mind more often and we just don't get that now. And that's one thing I'd miss.
I, you couldn't have teed that up better because we talked about this in Finance Agenda. One of the things that I'm super excited about is that Travis, this is his wheelhouse and when he was at the City of Champaign, he had this like portal that looks at revenue. He brought to Finance Agenda a landscape of, of, um, sales tax, not just like for our county, but in general, with like analyzing it for the last ten years. I was like, oh, this is amazing. So once Travis gets his feet on the ground, that, we just talked about this, having sort of a regular, whether it be quarter, I don't know, we need it every month, but maybe quarterly, sort of like, hey, this is where the revenue is going. I will say this, you know, I do think that we've done a good job being conservative but realistic with our budget and I think that that's reflected in the increase in our bond rating that I never thought would happen while I was on this board. Um, I think we've maxed out on that, I don't, I don't see it going up again. But I, in part, that's because of the sort of analytical work that our previous staff has done on putting this together. But I think that this is going to be, it was one of the reasons, I mean, there's a lot of reasons I was excited to have you come on, Travis, but that was, when he, when he was talking about sort of looking at trends and all of that, when, when I first got to talk to him, I was like, oh, like the board, I, I agree with you. I think some of the reason that the board is a little bit out of touch with sort of our financial position is we don't have that robust conversation anymore. Um, and part of it is things have been so volatile, making predictions have been really hard. But yes, and also we have now caught up with our revenue sort of, uh, reporting in the treasurer's office that also is making it difficult because it's hard to predict the future when you're still cleaning up from several years ago. But you couldn't have teed that up better. So look for it coming this spring. Thank you. I, listen, I know like y'all were like, oh yeah, we have a short meeting and then I just made it long, but I really genuinely want us to, like, I feel like this is a, financial oversight is the biggest thing we do on this board and like understanding how these basics kind of work together. And I find bonds really confusing, so.
Thank you, and please don't apologize because we needed that clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome. And like I said, I'll put, I'll have Megan, if you can, put that up on the, and I wanted to get it out to y'all ahead of time, but listen, I was finishing it today, so.
All right, uh, next we have Justice and Social, what, no? Oh, whoopsie.
So for Consent Agenda, I have a one, two, three, and four. And I don't.
D one.
Oh, and I'm sorry, an E one, didn't want to forget that. D one, sorry, I circled the wrong one. Okay, one, two, three, and four, and D one.
All right, uh, next we have Justice, Social Services.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. So first up, we have the monthly reports that are available on each department's webpage, Public Defender for December 2023, and the 2023 Annual Report, Emergency Management Agency, November of 2023, Animal Control, both November and December of 2023, and the Veterans Assistance Commission, November and December of 2023. Item B, Jeff.
Thank you very much. And since the Public Defender's here, I'm going to ask her a couple of questions. I didn't want you to be bored. All right, Liz, hey, thank you. First of all, I want to commend you for issuing an annual report.
You're welcome.
I, I see that the other departments, maybe they will later, I'm not sure, the Emergency Management Agency, Animal Control, Veterans Assistance, I know he has an annual report, doesn't look like he issued it. And then I, I'm assuming that Probation and Court Services, which is not listed here, would also be an annual report. So thank you. Either you're setting the standard, I don't know if that's a policy thing or you're just above and beyond your peers in this area. But anyway, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it, actually. So I wanted to just, when I looked through your annual report and I'm looking at felony cases and probation violations.
Yes.
So on the felony cases, it looks like county's averaging about a hundred twenty-six a month, about-ish. Is that, no, I know you're new, so is that standard for our county? Is it just pretty much going to stay steady Eddie that way or do you have any thoughts about that?
So when I started, I compiled all of the previous monthly reports into annual reports and did comparison numbers. We are about average for this year. I think that the lowest I saw was around thirteen hundred felonies annually and the highest was around nineteen hundred annually. So I don't expect we would fluctuate outside of those numbers and we are dead in the middle for twenty-three.
Then how does our county stack up, if you want to call it a stack up, or compare with the, you know, counties that surround us?
I would say we're high volume.
We're high volume, like twenty percent, fifty percent?
I don't feel comfortable estimating without having reviewed their reports in detail, but the last time I looked at it, which was probably in March, we were above by a few hundred cases annually as compared to McLean County and Segment County.
Okay, thank you. And then on the probation violations?
Why are there so many that are still outstanding?
Yes.
Yes, let me address that. So when a person gets put on probation, it's for a term of years. It can be twelve months, twenty-four months, forty-eight months, whatever. Uh, and if a person violates that probation, then the state attorney's office files a petition to revoke. That triggers the probation violation and that's where that stat comes from. When you are revoked on probation, oftentimes what our judges will do is schedule what are called remission hearings. And so rather than just go to court and say, you're terminated, you get a sentence, they will often reimpose probation and then keep monthly or bimonthly status hearings where we monitor the probation or status, see whether they're complying with services, how much progress have we made on probation? And so those cases tend to stay open for a long time. Uh, it's not true in every case, we do have probation violations that are resolved either by DOC sentences or sometimes people are unsuccessfully discharged from their probation. Uh, but the cases that are set for remission hearings, which are many of them, and we have PTR calls, petition to revoke calls in both the felony courtrooms and the misdemeanor courtroom, um, and those can go on for months. And so when you open a probation violation, assuming there is remission hearing scheduled, you're going to be doing that for a long time. And so they don't close as quickly.
So they stack, so does one individual's violation stack up or just stays at one violation?
It counts as one violation, but people, I would say that it's harder to close a probation violation than almost any other case.
Okay.
Because sometimes the judges will want to see them for a year, every month or two.
All right. Anyway, thank you, well done.
You're welcome. Any other questions while I'm here? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pollock. All right, moving on. Item B is actually something that I would really like to discuss with the board. Speaking with Ms. Locke today, she is our liaison, the county board liaison with Rose Krantz. And talking about the different, well, talking about the reports they're giving us, they're not exactly super helpful. So they have indicated to her that they're very willing to change the reports to be something that would be more transparent, more beneficial to us as a board to see. So I just kind of wanted to throw it out there. I don't know if you want to talk about this a little bit, okay?
So after our last meeting, make sure I'm on, after our last meeting, I reached out to Rose Krantz and I let them know, like, while I am a firm believer in the goal of reentry and while many of us are firm believers in it, the reports they're giving us only show dollars in and dollars out. They're not showing us the people they're touching, they're not showing us the services provided. And it's really hard to justify a hundred thousand dollars a year without evidence and proof, and isn't this wonderful? Almost everybody here, except for I think two, three of you, were not on the board yet when the former Rose Krantz representative was here and he spoke to us about what he did. And he gave us some numbers and they, they can't be replicated. So he's no longer there, there's a new person on board, there's no easy handoff, like, oh, VAC wasn't doing reports and here's how to do them because they were in existence. There's no easy handoff, so they're willing to create reports from scratch for us. What I propose, I'm welcome to all feedback, but the number of potential clients, just contacts made each month, the number of active clients, the success rate, has anybody re-offended that you're actively working with? One difficulty that they do have, when we initially started the reentry program, years and years, long before my time here, there was a list that came of people recently released from DOC. DOC does not provide that list anymore, so you're having to like make contact by word of mouth. So Ms. Myar, the new, the new representative, she, she calls into probation, excuse me, she crawls into parole, she speaks to the Department of Corrections and lets them know like, hey, give them my info, and she does this every week. And she's been making some, most, most of the contact at this point are helping the recently released find housing because that's the first need. You can't find a job, you can't re-enter society without a place to live. And that's been difficult as it is for so many people, but it's finding housing, food security, helping people get into an educational program. So they're willing to revamp their reports and I'd ask that anybody that has a request for what they'd like to see, let me know now, let me know sometime soon. I speak with them again later this week and I'd love to give them much better guidance. For this month, after, after I spoke to them last month, I told them, just give us what you've been giving us because we don't know what you want or what we all want yet, but we can fix it. He's going to write me a list right now. Thank you, Dr. Store.
I, I was a preceding and I, I can't remember some of the stuff.
Yeah. But in terms of what we do want, monthly contact or just the people they're reaching out to and services provided, and I let them know that we would like to see them here to talk to us about what they do sometime by the end of the first quarter. And if anyone has any other info, please reach out, call me, email me, I'll, I'll talk to them or call them directly. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, Jennifer, I appreciate that. The, um, did I, did you say the Department of Corrections doesn't issue numbers that are released? I misunderstood that.
They used to provide a list of, these are the people that have been released to your county. These are the people that have been released into your community this week, here's their contacted.
So anywhere across the state then?
Yeah, they used to, they used to give that to us, that is no longer provided.
Because it's illegal to do that or it's just?
I, I, this, I do not know. Before I was in this position, then it, it had stopped, but nobody can really adequately explain why they can't do the handoff information because when you're locked up, you have no privacy, but the second you're released, they, they won't disclose those names and contact info to us anymore.
Thank you. And, and that's one of the, the things that I've heard throughout the years. There need to be some type of communication, some kind of system where we do know who's entering our community and what services they need. So I appreciate your time being. So, I appreciate your time being on that board as the liaison. And I think you're doing a great job. You're asking all the right questions. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wilson again.
Thank you. So, one metric I would be interested in is, is how many veterans go through Rosecrans? Typically, if a veteran is experiencing PTSD, they have a 60% likelihood of having trouble with the law. So, that being the case, there must be some population of veterans, I would think, that would be released into Champaign County. And if they could use the Rosecrans service, that would be wonderful. But, I mean, the Rosecrans service did show up at the last veterans event that was in Rantoul. There was a representative there. So, I just thought, well, okay, veterans are going through Rosecrans. That's what I'm thinking. But to have a metric, I think, would be helpful. That's just one idea.
All right. Not seeing any more hands, but as a reminder, just email Jennifer. Oh, Stephanie, go ahead.
I know they used to help people with this. I don't know if they still, but getting a driver's license, and that is, like, the gateway to so many things, including jobs and stuff like that. That's a metric I'd be really interested in seeing. Yeah, state ID or driver's license.
So, they do still help with that. Needing to make an appointment has made it more difficult, obviously, but we're all aware of that. But there's also programs, not at every prison, but at some prisons, there's a program in place where they'll, if you're there the two times a year they do it, they'll even help you get your state ID before you, before you're released. You have to be at the right place at the right time. And you can't time when you're in which prison. But if you are fortunate enough to be in one of the participating ones, you can come out raring to go. Like, it's not being born on third base, but it's much better than being released without an ID.
I like the topic. So, I think, so, like, is it job placement also? How many jobs are people put into place? Are they, you know, being registered to vote? You know, learning basic skills, banking, financial skills, things like that? Does that all come through Rosecrans also?
I've not yet heard about helping anyone register to vote, though I would like to see that happen, right? We do allow people who are released to vote. I'd like that to happen. They do help with getting into some job training. If people can qualify, we've had a lot of luck getting people into the program at Parkland to drive a truck. And that's a great life that you can get into at that point. But the priority has to go to housing right now. It's been so dire that they're, that actively the organizations that attend the reentry council monthly meeting have formed a branch-off meeting just specific to housing, to try and prioritize that while still also being able to address food insecurity, job availability, and all of the other issues. And all of this was never reflected in the reports coming to the board.
Well, it's awesome. I'm so glad you're doing this. I mean, it could be education. What education things are open for these individuals? Whether it get a GED or whatever the next step, all kinds of things.
So, I think, in terms of going forward, you know, we'll be asking them to give, in the monthly reports, number of contacts, number of people they're working with. If somebody has fallen off and become reincarcerated, because that is the goal, is to avoid reincarceration. So, we need to know if it is happening. But then also, if they want to give us some bullet point highlights without disclosing specifics about anyone's personal information, but some bullet points of the highlights of the month. Would that be acceptable to the group as a whole? All right. I hope that next month, we are much more satisfied with the Rosecrans report. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you, everybody, for your suggestions and ideas and participating in the discussion. All right, item C, other business. I don't have any other business. Does anybody here have any other business for Justice of Social Services? No. I have no chair's report, and I have nothing to place on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, over to you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have policy personnel appointments.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Patterson. The monthly HR report is in our document, and I calculated the turnover as 0.4%, which I considered, I'd say, sounds pretty low, considering that there were three resignations out of over 700 employees. We have a lot of job, I'm skipping to item 2B over, and I'll get to 2A here in a minute. We have a lot of vacant appointments. And I call your attention again to the correctional officers and master control officers at the, at the county, at the county jail. And I encourage people to let their constituents know, however they can, about the need for these positions, because sooner or later, not sooner or later, if the new jail addition is completed, the folks who are incarcerated in other counties are going to return. And as they return, we would like to have staff that are both trained and experienced. Right now, as I understand it, most of our existing jail staff are fairly new. New to fairly, to fairly new. A lot of the old hands, so to speak, have retired and are looking towards that. So, it might seem that we have, you know, I think it's incumbent on us to try to do the best that we can to try to fill these vacancies. Okay, end of that lecture. Oh, yes, Jeff, please.
Thank you. This is really my concern. So, on page 62 and 63, back to the monthly report. I guess I'm still trying to figure out the turnover metric. I'm not sure how it's calculated, but I'm sure Steve will call me and let me know how it's calculated. But my question is this. We've had, since 2022, we've had seven vacancies. And five of those since 2022 are in the sheriff's office. And in '23, we, at the end of 2023, ended with 39 vacancies. That's 46 vacancies. I'm trying to understand how that affects the county, especially since 2022. Are those positions really still needed if after, since 2022, I'm not filling them? And then, and maybe they are, I'm just saying. And then there's 20, and then 39 positions at the end of the year. And then we're adding six more in 2023. I'm trying to figure out, what does that, what does that tell us?
First of all, I'd like to thank again Ms. Michelle Jeff for making the vacant position chart. You're much more clear and apparent than we've, than we've had in the past. And I, I think that that, your good question ought to be turned over to the county executive, or possibly Jenny Lockson, who looks like she wants to.
Well, I believe the sheriff addressed this at a meeting, I don't know if that was last month. He told us that a lot of those positions were intentionally held vacant while the jail was under construction, because not as many staff were needed due to people being held outside of county. But now that construction is nearing completion, now is the time when he needs to start filling those so that people will be trained up when the jail is open.
I think that the other part of it is, is that he was using some of that money to kind of, as I recall, please, other members of the board, correct me if I'm mistaken, using some of that unallocated funds to support his staff in either through hiring, training, or additional funds. Does anybody else remember that?
The sheriff consistently returns a significant portion of his personal budget back to the general fund at the end of the year. So, I mean, he has overtime in the corrections department to a degree, but still a large portion of that money comes back. And the other two positions that are listed from '22, the senior administrator in the information technology department is constantly being advertised, and we have just not been able to find someone qualified for that position. And the planner position in planning and zoning is also consistently advertised, and we have not been able to find someone qualified for that position either.
Jamal?
I guess to Jeff's question, then, do we need the new position? And do we need someone in planning and zoning?
I think, I know we need the system administrator positions. Our RT plan is not going as quickly as we would like to, based on the fact that we just don't have enough staff to do all the things that IT needs to do. So, we definitely do need that position. As for the planner position, I think the department would function smoother, and the backlog of complaints that are sitting in planning and zoning would be processed quicker and more efficiently if the staff could focus on their actual tasks, as opposed to having to help manage the planner vacancy that currently exists.
Yeah, as, I guess, from a financial perspective, I would caution us from thinking that because we have positions that remain open, because we cannot afford to provide adequate services for the people that we serve in this county, because our current pay rate doesn't recruit qualified candidates, as indication that we don't need those positions. Instead, what it should indicate is that we, as a body, aren't adequately providing core services, especially in some of the rural districts in our county, that we should be. For example, dealing with zoning issue cases that are incredibly backlogged, because we don't fund the positions properly in order to recruit the staff that we need. That's how I take this report. Not from, not, I don't take this report as, what should we cut? I take this report as an indictment in how we serve our county based on the current financial structure of the county. And, and I think if you talk to the staff in these offices, that's what their response would be. Their response would be, like, I desperately need these people. I just can't fund, like, I just can't get anybody to work for what we're able to pay.
Wasn't that one of the points of the Gallagher report that we heard a little over a year ago?
Yes, and is also going to be a more fine-tuned report of, from the compensation study that we just decided to fund from ARPA going into this next year, where we're actually going to have, like, a plan about kind of what to do with some of this.
Mr. Sommers.
I just want to remind county board members that these questions that Jeff is asking with regard to, do we really need these positions, is actually a lot more, they're more nuanced in terms of looking at them. We've had a vacancy in the animal control department of a veterinarian. Okay, so we haven't had a veterinarian for around a year. Does that mean we still need a veterinarian? Yes, we do. Are we spending some of those funds on part-time staff to try and work through that? Yes. Simply because, simply because a position is vacant does not mean that we still don't have some staff working to do those jobs and render that position not one that we need to continue. I mean, I think that's just a very simplistic way of looking at this.
Mr. Thorislin.
Yeah. First of all, just on the planning and zoning, I think, I don't know if this is news that's not out there, but they're, they're short-staffed, and they may be more short-staffed in the near future. They do a lot of work. Those who have served on the zoning board or in ELOC understand the volume that staff gives us and information and the research that's required to put those packages together. And they spend a lot of their day dealing with some of this minutia and mundane discussions about roosters and weeds and lawns and things, and getting complaints from here and there. As far as the sheriff need, I'm going to reiterate what Steve said. Just because these positions have been vacant for a while, and I know the sheriff held back on some, we need more deputies. We need to keep them. We pay to train them. We want them to stay. We don't want them to leave. And when we have discussions about the potential of raising the public safety sales tax, that's exactly why we're talking about it, because we need these positions filled. We're going to need corrections officers. And we need to pay people competitively, or they will get trained and leave. And that's all we're doing now.
Emily, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly note for people watching, this is the second time that we have discussed this argument. And we have heard these responses and the necessity of these positions. I just wanted to note that. We've gone around this a few times.
Thank you. Michelle, you haven't spoken yet.
I would just note, from a procedural perspective, if this is something the board is seriously concerned about, the budget process is the time to have this conversation in detail. There's nothing that can be done after the budget has been established. Once you allocate the personnel funds to the elected official, it is their money to spend. You cannot go back and cut positions at that point.
Mr. Wilson, you had further comment or question?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I appreciate the energy around this. That's why I brought it up, and I know we've talked about it twice. I do recall during the budget process that the majority of the board members, oh, they talked about salaries and improving the salaries of the employees. That was the bottom of the list of the consideration for the budget. So, I appreciate the energy that, yes, the employees need to be well-paid. I'm 100% agree with that. But I do recall that was basically tabled, that discussion, related to employee compensation, other than the fact that I requested that it be addressed. So, I disagree with you, Stephanie, because our actions already showed, from the last budget process, that we're not absolutely concerned about the salaries of employees.
So, at the meeting that I was at, what we voted on was, what we understood is that in order to fairly compensate our employees, we need a plan, which we're going to do in 2024. And just throwing money at a problem without a plan is, doesn't make any sense. So, I reject your comment.
Okay. Just, I, I, let's, let's close this to say that we're, we look with, we look forward to the work of the Gallagher Group and the county executive and their staff to help us, guide us in the coming budget year, and to do what we can to help fill these positions. And, and I think we all want to see our county employees fairly compensated. And, and, and let's, let's leave it at that. And we'll, we'll go on to the next, which is applications for open appointments. And that's on page 67 and 68 in your book. And I'd like everybody to take pages, oops, let me see here. No, it's not that one. It's pages 65 and 66, and tear those out of your program, out of your agenda, and/or electronically save these, pages 65 and 66, because these are the appointments coming up in the coming year. And, and while some of these are seemingly appointments that we make routinely, some of them, we kind of struggle to fill. We have, you know, appointments coming up for Board of Review Sanitary District in May, lots of appointments for Fire Protection Districts. And then- for Fire Protection Districts. And then August is pretty much Drainage District Month. And then Zoning Board of Appeals in November, and December is, seems to be devoted to transportation. And the way that we kind of help find good successors for ourselves on the board, because we don't consider this a life sentence, is, is that, is to kind of help, is to get people familiar with, with their own governance through service on these boards. Okay. Oh, Ellie, please.
Just to clarify, if it, under the openings column, if it doesn't specify R or D, can it be either?
I, I would think so. And, and, and we especially encourage to people who are from, you know, women, disadvantaged minorities, or people historically overlooked minorities, folks that we normally don't see around the table. And, and I, we'd like them to, to apply for some of these, because I think a diversity of opinion and cultural input would, would certainly be a welcome to improving our, our community. Any other comment there? Pages 65 and 66. Tear it out of your, out of your, out of your program. Okay. Moving on, we have reports from the county clerk. And, and the item number nine, B, two, establishing place of election for the 2024, 2024 primary election. And, and there's a few places at the end of page 75. Mr. Farney. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Ms., Ms. Jen Locke, whose name I remembered, I want that noted, make a note of that, make, put that in the record. Seconds. Discussion on, on the motion. Mr. Wilson.
All right.
There'll be no chuckling in, you know, from the, from the gallery, please.
Yeah, so I appreciate all the effort it takes to establish these polling, 68 polling locations for the primary. And I, I know there's a lot of effort that goes into that. So what I'm, my question is about the balance, about the equity in each polling location, as far as how many voters vote in each polling location.
That, that, that sounds like an Angie question.
Thanks, Angie.
No problem, Mr. Wilson. So, question again.
Yeah, so the question is, this is what I did. I, I looked at all the 68 polling locations. I looked at the clerk's report for the 20, 2020 general election. How many people voted on Election Day at that location? And then I looked at the primary in June 2022, how many people voted in that location? And then I looked at all the numbers for the last election, 2022, for those that voted in that election. And it seems like some polling locations, where they, where they're combined, like Rantoul, Rantoul 1 and 2, and Ludlow 1 and 2, or something like that, there may be 1,000 people combined in one location. And then other polling locations, there's less than 50, sometimes down to 10. And so my, my curiosity is, why isn't there a balance or equity with, associated with dividing up the polling locations to reach the people appropriately that want to vote on Election Day?
Sure. One thing I'd say is, I wouldn't use 2020 as any kind, for any kind of data, because-
Because that's COVID.
Because of the pandemic, and we know that vote by mail was the dominant because of the, the pandemic.
I agree.
So, one of the things, and because of the pandemic, it has really pushed forward vote by mail at an accelerated rate. We know that it was trending in that direction, that the pandemic really pushed it into a different direction. So, to talk a little bit about numbers, just to give a little bit of context, when we came into office, and Ms. Jack can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, I think when we came in, it was like maybe top 7,000 for vote by mail, right? And now, post-pandemic, and we're not using those numbers for vote by mail either, because of pandemic skew those. Now we're, we've seen legislative changes that allow for a permanent list, for expanded early voting, for Dropbox usage, and all of these things that have really kind of accelerated this. We're now at a permanent list of 16,000. So when you look at all of the factors with vote by mail and early voting, we're using the data to drive the decision. So we haven't made any changes from, I believe, 2022 or 2023, unless the polling locations are telling us, we don't want to be a polling location anymore, or we can't do this because of other reasons. And we have to respect that. In terms of balance, I'd be, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we recently had a meeting discussing this, about, about the balance. So when you, when you're taking all of these factors then, and what, and how we're trying to manage polling locations against the trends of vote by mail, but particularly early voting as well, we, we kind of count that in as well, because it's not voting on Election Day. The other piece to this, that's very, very important, that we like to get the word about, out about, is that used to be, early voting locations were early, were called vote centers, right? So universal, universal polling location, meaning early voting, anybody, anywhere in the county can go vote at any of these locations. Well, now, we've had legislation passed so that we can turn every polling location on Election Day. No matter where you live, you can vote anywhere. And it has been that way for the last three elections. So that, that, that's enough, that's a very important piece to consider here. So it's not just, why is this imbalance? We're trying to maintain the consistency of the locations, because we've heard from voters, we don't like a lot of changes. We had a lot of changes post-pandemic that accelerated things with early voting and vote by mail. And now we are trying to give as much access. We're, we're letting the data drive these decisions. But if you want to get a little bit more granular, I'm happy to pull that together and share that with anyone who wants to. But the important thing here is not so much about the imbalance, because we're in a little bit of uncharted territory, in the sense that now, every polling location, whether it's early voting or on Election Day, anybody, anywhere can vote at any location, as long as they're an eligible voter in Champaign County.
Well, thanks, Angie. I just, oh, I'll wait to follow up later.
Mr. Thorslund.
Thank you. I feel like I've talked a lot tonight, but I'm still not keeping up with you, Jeff. I'm going to try. Yeah, a lot, a lot of what Angie said, and I, I looked at these polling things, and I anticipated what maybe some of the questions would be. As a two-decade resident of rural Newcombe Township, we used to vote up at Town Hall, and now we would vote, I think, in Fisher, or down in Mohammed. I think it's down in Mohammed at Lake of the Woods. When you live out in the country, there's a, there's a couple of things you can usually count on. Maybe I was an exception to some of those things. They tend to lean Republican. Anything you want to do when you live in the country, you get in your car to do. You're going to get in your car, and you're going to drive to go get your food, and your gas, and your cigarettes, and your beer, and nowadays, your pot, maybe. But you don't walk to the polling place, you don't ride your bicycle, unless you want to get run over by somebody on the phone on a country road. Town is different. I think when you see these numbers, Jeff, it maybe reflects the fact that the more town-oriented and college kid-oriented people are the ones that have leaned towards that permanent vote by mail list, who aren't either going to early voting here at Brookins, or they're putting it in a Dropbox. And so the numbers are naturally going to go down, but you still need to provide a polling place for those people. And traditionally, we do that. The consolidation in the rural area is because Fooseland, I think, had really, really low numbers. And you have to put two, three election judges in every one of these places, and we know that we pay them, and there's equipment costs involved, and there's not the turnout. And I don't think the impact is as high. The other problem is, the top of the GOP ticket continues to extol the virtues of not voting early, of not voting by mail, of only voting on Election Day. So you're going to have a skewed amount of people that will continue to vote on Election Day, and that's fine. That's Election Day, and that's what you call it. But we're going to see this trend continue, that the rural polling places will continue to have higher numbers than some of the ones in town, because a lot of people have leaned towards the other ways to vote. And I think it'd be great if everyone, I think it's proposed, that everyone gets a mailed ballot that they can choose to use or not in their house. I think you'll really see by mail voting or Dropbox voting go up from that.
I, I do want to just add something to this, and thank you, Eric, for that. I think you articulated it better than I, I did with some of this. But I want to, we, we talked, the clerk and I talked about this in the Democratic Caucus, but I'm not sure if all of you are aware, that tomorrow, the county will be hosting a subject matter hearing on voter access. And it will deal with vote by mail, but it will also deal with voter access for those with disabilities, such as blindness. I know that they're also on the agenda. And how we can make voting more accessible. But they're going to get into some real detail about vote by mail. And it will be not just the clerk talking about it, it'll be the, the members of the Clerk and Recorders Association, General Assembly. So this is kind of an exciting opportunity. And if anybody has time, it'll be here in the Shields Carter Room from 11 to 1. It's open to the public. You, there won't be an opportunity for people to speak unless you're on the agenda, but it would be, I would encourage anyone. And we're going to try and post that video later. We won't be able to livestream, but we're going to try and make that available on the YouTube channel, as well as we move this, as we move this forward.
So one more question then. I'd be happy to stop by and understand your numbers, but, and I'm disagreeing with Eric, actually. So, so the last general election, so the last two, 20, in 2022, 50%, over 50% of vote was on Election Day. And on the general election, it was almost 50-50 split between Democrat and Republicans that voted on Election Day. So it does seem, if I only took those few data points, that the trend is, seems to be in favor, at least for half the population, to vote on Election Day. And I'm not talking about Newcombe Township, but, and I know it's combined with Mohammed, and I'm okay with that. But what is interesting to me, when I look at polling location number 42, which is Champaign 1, 2022 election is one polling location, 56 votes. And then the 2022 primary, 42 votes. And then 2020 election, which we decided we were going to discount, it was zero votes. And then when I look at the combined consolidated polling location for, let's just pick Mohammed, that's two, Mohammed 1 and 3, that's over 1,000 votes on Election Day. Or if I look at some of the other precincts, whether they're combined together, it's over 1,000 votes. And it's not Newcombe and Mohammed. So my, my challenge is, and I'm more than happy to talk about it. I'm not, I know we're going to vote for this. I'm going to vote no. I'll vote yes, that's fine. But I'm voting no, because I don't think there's a clear enough explanation on the equity of how the vote is dispersed. So if the average vote count is between 230 across all the precincts, and some combined precincts have over 1,000 people voting at that location, and some less than 100, I'm just curious. And because of that curiosity, I'm just going to vote no. And I'm more than happy to stop by.
Ms. Jack, you, you wish to weigh in?
Yeah, if it's all right with the clerk's office. So, the clerk's office doesn't decide the dispersment, the, the voters do. And depending on what report you're looking at, I'm not sure which one it is.
It's the one you publish on the clerk's website.
Okay, so that could be a variety of things. You could be looking at early voting combined with Election Day voting. It could also be looking at people who voted per precinct, but that doesn't mean that all of those people voted at that precinct location. They could have voted at other locations, or they could have voted by mail. Again, without seeing the actual report in front of me, I can't, I can't clarify that. And not all voting locations are created equal. So the smaller ones will have two to three stations, the large ones, like the Illina Union, the Lake of the Woods, Leonard Center, they will be fitted with as many stations as they can fit, because they have higher volume of people coming through, and that's a known quantity that's going to occur. And honestly, like the ones that are very low voter turnout, it would be preferred to consolidate those into other locations, but there is always extreme pushback anytime there's conversation about consolidating locations based on turnout into a location. So at this point, it just is easier to maintain the 60-whatever locations that the clerk's office has, as opposed to continually having the debate over which sites are consolidated and which sites are not. I, oh, go ahead.
Ms. Fortado.
I, I zoned out a little bit there. I just want to make sure that I, I heard the question from Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, was the, the polling place that you were indicating that you thought wasn't perhaps necessary, or why was it?
I'm not saying it's not necessary.
Was it, but was it, what, I just, or that you were questioning because it had a low turnout, was that Mount Calvary Baptist Church? Was that the one that you, I don't, I just, I honestly, which, I, which number was it?
Yes, Mount Calvary. So, I'm, I'm looking at numbers. I'm not looking at anything other than the numbers.
I just wanted to throw in.
So I, my thought was, if the clerk likes to be efficient, which I agree with efficiency, and wants to save money, then why wouldn't I just combine that little precinct with the low voter turnout to the next one? Does that make sense? If I could do that in Rantoul, how, why is that difficult in the city? That's my question.
Oh, I, I, I don't think the purpose of whole, of election is, is efficiency. But I, no, I, I-
We're agreeing.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, because there's, Ms. Patton, would you please, if you-
I just want to say this, and I think it's sort of what Board Member Fortado was referring to. We have to be very careful when we're talking about polling locations in the heart of the African-American community. And we need to, we are making every effort to increase voter access for everyone in Champaign County. But we need to be very, very cautious when we're talking about, you know, removing or consolidating polling locations in the African-American community. We can have that discussion. I would also ask that if you have questions about the polling locations and want to get into some of the minutia, obviously, I'm happy to come to a board meeting and stay for a couple hours on a Tuesday night. But we're also available by email. We've invited board members to come to our office, and we welcome that. We want that. It's a transparent office, and it's only going to make us better if everybody has the information, so that we can share that. So that would just ask in the future to, you know, if you have questions such as this, that are pretty detailed, to, you know, we're available.
Ms. Lock, Ms. Lockson?
I was just going to say that Ellie and I did a tour with Angie, maybe like six weeks ago. Very informative. We were able to ask any questions we wanted to ask. They're available to set up that with any of us. Highly encouraged. And one other quick point, I did work that 2020 general election at the Rantoul polling place. And there was more than one person that I turned away, because they were at the wrong location. One of them was like 50- One of them was like fifteen minutes before the polls were going to close, and I couldn't let them vote because they were at the wrong location. Having those universal polling locations is increasing access to all voters in Champaign County. You can go anywhere on Election Day that is a polling place. You can go by your workplace, you can go by home, and you won't, like, I could think of that person that didn't get to vote in the twenty-twenty general because they showed up late at a place where they weren't supposed to be. And we could have let them vote with today's legislation, so.
Thanks, Angie.
To, to put a coda on this, this also is the time to start encouraging some of your, your, you know, constituents to consider serving as an election judge. Ms. Patton, you left too soon. No reprieve. How, how are we doing, how are we doing on election judges? Is this, is this a problem in any particular, you know, rural, urban area?
It is. I mean, we're, we, I want to shout out Ann Quackenbush, who's our election judge coordinator, because she's done an amazing job herding all the cats together. But we always need election judges. And we, I want to make sure that everybody understands that we need election judges that will serve where we need them to serve, that we get a lot of requests and particulars about, I can only do it, that what we need is people that want to serve for early voting, for, to process vote by mail, and on particularly Election Day. We, I think it's been discussed at length that we have a significant amount of Democratic election judges, and we're grateful for everyone. We have an amazingly, pretty significant shortage of Republican election judges. We have communicated with all the chairs and organizations that are involved in this, and anything that you all could do to help with this, we would be extremely grateful for as we head into a twenty-twenty-four election that we know is going to be challenging because of lots of different factors. So we do need election judges. It's a fun gig. We're increasing your pay. Come out and have fun and be on the front lines of democracy, because it's exciting. And, you know, when people have questions, you know, and want to ask about the process or, you know, don't seem to have confidence, you know, we always encourage them to come serve, come find out, because in our office, we have Democratic and Republican election judges and staff working together towards a common goal. I encourage anyone that wants to come in as we're gearing up for the election to, to come see this. It will restore your faith just a little bit. So thank you. Yes, please send your election judge recruits our way.
Builds confidence and, 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 and you get to meet a lot of neighbors. Ms. Beth, Ms. Beth, been itched there or not?
Thank you. Could you go over real quickly qualifications to be an election judge, just for public edification?
Oh, Ms., okay, so you have to be a resident of Champaign County. You can't, Michelle, I know you want to jump in so bad. Let's see how much I, you have to be a registered voter, you can't be on the ballot. You have to take the training, which is available online and in person. You can't be a P, yeah, I can't be a PC. No. Yes. What did I miss?
How old?
You can be sixteen. And do it. And you have to be a U.S. citizen.
How, how can you be sixteen, but you have to be a registered voter?
You do not have to be a registered voter.
Oh, you don't have to be a registered voter.
Actually, in general, you don't have to be a registered voter. Well, it's just a very weird dichotomy. You're not a registered voter, but you want to serve as an election judge. How does that happen? So. It's also listed on the county clerk's website, along with the application to sign up.
So my other question is, how do you determine if someone's a Republican or Democrat, if they've never voted before, like your newly minted sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old?
They have to sign an affidavit, they have to sign an affidavit, like, when they sign up to be a judge, they sign which party they're representing.
Mr. Thorson.
Yeah, only because I know someone who did it, the, the voters that are not voters yet, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. There was a, a program in one of the civics classes that encouraged high school students to be election judges. And a handful of them out in District One did it, really enjoyed it, really liked the money, and liked getting a day off school and hanging out with the little old ladies and snacks. And so they really, really liked it. And I think it should be really fostered, because all of us are old, and we need a lot of young people.
Hey, now, they get a day off school either way, so encourage high school students who will be off for Election Day anyway, if they're old enough, take the training. Do they have to be sixteen on Election Day or sixteen when they train?
Just Election Day. That's the, that's, that's like the marker of serving as a judge. What's your age on Election Day?
I think mine turns sixteen like a few days before Election Day, but I'm not sure.
Okay, sounds like we all got to discuss this, or we got a list of things to do. But we have the, one item before us to vote on, which is establishing place of election for the twenty-twenty-four primary election. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Thanks for your cooperation. There is no item to place on the consent agenda. There is no other business, and there is no chair's report. Chair Patterson, back to you.
All right, thank you. Further business, just want to announce that according to the National Weather Service, all of central Illinois should be snowing by eight P.M. It is now eight eleven, so keep your lollygagging to a minimum after the meeting. I call this meeting adjourned.